Welcome to the Garner Town Council Regular Meeting of December 2nd, 2025. Welcome to the Garner Town Council Regular Meeting of December 2nd, 2025. But the good news is we have a lot of beautiful people joining us here today that offset I usually like to start out by pointing out what a beautiful day in Garner it was, I usually like to start out by pointing out what a beautiful day in Garner it was, but any little rain shower we might have had earlier. So again, welcome. but weather-wise, not so much today. With that, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the town clerk to please call But the good news is we have a lot of beautiful people joining us here today that offset any the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
little rain shower we might have had earlier. Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
So again, welcome.
Councilmember Behringer.
With that, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the town clerk to please call
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
the roll.
And Councilmember Singleton. Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Thank you. And I'll call on Councilmember Phil Matthews to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
then the invocation.
Councilmember Matthews.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Please stand if you can.
Here.
Thank you. And I'll call on Councilmember Phil Matthews to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for
then the invocation. Mr. Matthews?
Please stand if you can. which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us pray. Let us pray. Oh merciful heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you tonight, and just thank you for Oh merciful heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you tonight, and just thank you for being with our town, Lord. being with our town, Lord. Lord, be with this council as we go into a new year coming up, new people onboard, new Lord, be with this council as we go into a new year coming up, new people onboard, new decisions to be made, Lord. decisions to be made, Lord. And Lord, help us to represent the 45,000 people of Garner by making good judgments And Lord, help us to represent the 45,000 people of Garner by making good judgments and good calls. and good calls. Help us to work with our town staff, Lord, as we move forward, making all this happen. Help us to work with our town staff, Lord, as we move forward, making all this happen. I pray for our fire department, our police department, EMS, as we go into the holiday I pray for our fire department, our police department, EMS, as we go into the holiday season, be with them as they protect us and do those things they do 24/7. season, be with them as they protect us and do those things they do 24/7. And Lord, I just pray for our nation, and that one day we'll have no more wars. And Lord, I just pray for our nation, and that one day we'll have no more wars. I pray for peace in the Middle East, Lord, and I just thank you just for another day I pray for peace in the Middle East, Lord, and I just thank you just for another day of gift of life. of gift of life. Every day is so precious, and we never take it for granted. Every day is so precious, and we never take it for granted. Thank you again. Thank you again. Bless everybody that's here tonight, get everybody home safely, and I just pray we'll Bless everybody that's here tonight, get everybody home safely, and I just pray we'll have a wonderful meeting as we move forward. have a wonderful meeting as we move forward. And everybody said, amen. And everybody said, amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Now we move to Item B on the agenda, and I called it a regular meeting, but this is Now we move to Item B on the agenda, and I called it a regular meeting, but this is not really a regular meeting at all. not really a regular meeting at all. This is the once every two-year organizational meeting where we do things a little bit differently. This is the once every two-year organizational meeting where we do things a little bit differently. We're going to start out with a presentation to our council member of 20 years, Kathy Behringer, We're going to start out with a presentation to our council member of 20 years, Kathy Behringer, and I don't think I could say it any better than the proclamation that we put together. and I don't think I could say it any better than the proclamation that we put together. And as we all worked together to pull this up, I said this takes more than a page, it And as we all worked together to pull this up, I said this takes more than a page, it takes a page and a half, just this stuff on there. takes a page and a half, just this stuff on there. But we'll do our best to get right through this here. But we'll do our best to get right through this here. Whereas Kathy Behringer has served with honor and distinction on the Garner Town Council Whereas Kathy Behringer has served with honor and distinction on the Garner Town Council for 20 years, and whereas during her tenure on the council, Ms. Behringer has been an for 20 years, and whereas during her tenure on the council, Ms. Behringer has been an esteemed servant leader in the community, championing numerous causes with a rare combination esteemed servant leader in the community, championing numerous causes with a rare combination of pragmatism, vision, and passion. of pragmatism, vision, and passion. And whereas Mrs. Behringer has been a dedicated advocate for revitalizing downtown Garner, And whereas Mrs. Behringer has been a dedicated advocate for revitalizing downtown Garner, actively leading efforts that strengthen the area's character and foster community pride, actively leading efforts that strengthen the area's character and foster community pride, and for her efforts, she was named a North Carolina Main Street Champion in 2011 by and for her efforts, she was named a North Carolina Main Street Champion in 2011 by the NC Department of Commerce. the NC Department of Commerce. And whereas Ms. Behringer also has been Garner's foremost champion for public art, establishing And whereas Ms. Behringer also has been Garner's foremost champion for public art, establishing a Public Arts Advisory Board to help bring to fruition her longstanding vision for a Public Arts Advisory Board to help bring to fruition her longstanding vision for public public art in Garner, beginning with decorative wraps on mechanical boxes and expanding to art in Garner, beginning with decorative wraps on mechanical boxes and expanding to include the installation of downtown Garner's first permanent sculpture, Wings of Hope, include the installation of downtown Garner's first permanent sculpture, Wings of Hope, by local artist Jeff Tur. by local artist Jeff Tur. Whereas, Ms. Behringer is actively involved in the Garner Women's Club, having served Whereas, Ms. Behringer is actively involved in the Garner Women's Club, having served as president and having led the successful application for the club's building to receive as president and having led the successful application for the club's building to receive historic designation, resulting in his recognition with the Anthemonium Award from Capital Area historic designation, resulting in his recognition with the Anthemonium Award from Capital Area Preservation. Preservation. And whereas, Ms. Behringer also has been a strong proponent for improving parks and And whereas, Ms. Behringer also has been a strong proponent for improving parks and recreation opportunities, and is advocated in particular for the Garner Senior Center. recreation opportunities, and is advocated in particular for the Garner Senior Center. And whereas, Ms. Behringer has made a positive impact in our community through her active And whereas, Ms. Behringer has made a positive impact in our community through her active involvement in groups such as Interactive Wake County, the Poole Family YMCA, Friends involvement in groups such as Interactive Wake County, the Poole Family YMCA, Friends of Historic Garner, and Passage Home. of Historic Garner, and Passage Home. And whereas, in recognition of her many years of dedicated service, Ms. Behringer has received And whereas, in recognition of her many years of dedicated service, Ms. Behringer has received the 2022 James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award and the 2025 Woman of the Year at the the 2022 James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award and the 2025 Woman of the Year at the She Achieves Garner Chamber Women's Conference. She Achieves Garner Chamber Women's Conference. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim December Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2025, as a day of recognition for Councilmember Kathy Behringer. 2nd, 2025, as a day of recognition for Councilmember Kathy Behringer. And we have a... And we have a... And we have a small gift, as a small token. And we have a small gift, as a small token. We thought about gavels and plaques and trophies, but this is a piece of art that says something We thought about gavels and plaques and trophies, but this is a piece of art that says something to all of us. to all of us. It helped us think of you, and we're going to sit right here, and when we have a photo It helped us think of you, and we're going to sit right here, and when we have a photo op, we'll go around and... op, we'll go around and... Because it's very heavy. Because it's very heavy.
It is heavy, I believe. It is heavy, I believe.
Have you got any comments you'd like to share with us? Have you got any comments you'd like to share with us?
I just have a few, not too many. I just have a few, not too many. Shortly after my family and I moved into Garner over 32 years ago, I met Pam Cash, Shortly after my family and I moved into Garner over 32 years ago, I met Pam Cash, a neighbor who was organizing the Community Watch group. a neighbor who was organizing the Community Watch group. I asked her why she was doing this, and she said, "I want to make my community a better I asked her why she was doing this, and she said, "I want to make my community a better place." place." At that time, my six children ranged in ages 1 to 18, and I certainly had plenty to spend At that time, my six children ranged in ages 1 to 18, and I certainly had plenty to spend my time on other than community service. my time on other than community service. But Pam's words, "I want to make my community a better place," took root in my spirit, But Pam's words, "I want to make my community a better place," took root in my spirit, and I soon became someone who wanted to make my community a better place as well. and I soon became someone who wanted to make my community a better place as well. I began participating in Community Watch, served as president of the Friends of Historic I began participating in Community Watch, served as president of the Friends of Historic Garner, which is now the Downtown Garner Association. Garner, which is now the Downtown Garner Association. I served six years on the Planning Commission, and then after much encouragement from community I served six years on the Planning Commission, and then after much encouragement from community members, I ran for the Town Council in 2022, excuse me, 2003. members, I ran for the Town Council in 2022, excuse me, 2003. I lost that election by 51 votes to Mr. Matthews. I lost that election by 51 votes to Mr. Matthews. The seed had been planted, and I ran again two years later, and I won by 11 votes. The seed had been planted, and I ran again two years later, and I won by 11 votes. Serving the citizens of Garner on the Town Council for the past 20 years has been both Serving the citizens of Garner on the Town Council for the past 20 years has been both an honor and a privilege. an honor and a privilege. My focus on growing Garner forward has allowed me to become involved in so many varied aspects My focus on growing Garner forward has allowed me to become involved in so many varied aspects of guiding our town into the future, and for that, I'm very grateful. of guiding our town into the future, and for that, I'm very grateful. To anyone who has encouraged me over the years, I thank you from the bottom of my To anyone who has encouraged me over the years, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. heart. Your confidence in me has been inspirational beyond words. Your confidence in me has been inspirational beyond words. And I also want to say congratulations to Gray and Kelvin as they begin the next leg And I also want to say congratulations to Gray and Kelvin as they begin the next leg of the journey in guiding Garner to be the best it can be. of the journey in guiding Garner to be the best it can be.
Thank you. Thank you. And we might have some comments from council members. And we might have some comments from council members. I'll start at this end where they seem to have a little seniority of working with Mr. I'll start at this end where they seem to have a little seniority of working with Mr. Behringer. Behringer. We'll start with Mr. Matthews. We'll start with Mr. Matthews.
I don't remember that. I don't remember that.
I do. I do.
But I ain't going to argue that. But I ain't going to argue that. Kathy, you have been a pleasure to work with through the years, and she and I would get Kathy, you have been a pleasure to work with through the years, and she and I would get here earlier because we always have a little snack of something deep before our meetings. here earlier because we always have a little snack of something deep before our meetings. And so we... And so we... I told her tonight, I said, "This will be our last supper tonight," so we'll... I told her tonight, I said, "This will be our last supper tonight," so we'll... Little something through it, but you will be missed, and all those things that you Little something through it, but you will be missed, and all those things that you handle, I'm so glad that you're going to continue with a lot of those things, because handle, I'm so glad that you're going to continue with a lot of those things, because you've still got a lot going on, and if you think you're going to retire now, that's you've still got a lot going on, and if you think you're going to retire now, that's not going to happen. not going to happen. So just keep on keeping on, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you. So just keep on keeping on, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Matthews? Mr. Matthews?
This weekend, I was at my parents' house cleaning out some stuff, and I found a Garner This weekend, I was at my parents' house cleaning out some stuff, and I found a Garner times from December of 2005. times from December of 2005. And that was, it was the... And that was, it was the... Edition, thank you, of the swearing-in of that council 20 years ago. Edition, thank you, of the swearing-in of that council 20 years ago. And I took a picture, and I texted Kathy, and I said, "Hey, look what I found." And I took a picture, and I texted Kathy, and I said, "Hey, look what I found." I'd known it was there, just cleaning up some stuff. I'd known it was there, just cleaning up some stuff. My newspaper was doing the stuff it was in, I don't know. My newspaper was doing the stuff it was in, I don't know. I said, "Look at this picture." I said, "Look at this picture." So I got to give her a copy. So I got to give her a copy. I told her I'm going to, but I sent her a picture of this, her being sworn in. I told her I'm going to, but I sent her a picture of this, her being sworn in. Mr. Behringer and four or five of your kids were there, and from 20 years ago. Mr. Behringer and four or five of your kids were there, and from 20 years ago. And we've served together, and we've worked hard together, we've had fun together. And we've served together, and we've worked hard together, we've had fun together. She's had to get on me a few times, and I just not mind doing it. She's had to get on me a few times, and I just not mind doing it. Sometimes if we were trying to talk to one another on the phone and playing phone tag, Sometimes if we were trying to talk to one another on the phone and playing phone tag, and I finally got through to her, she would pick up, she wouldn't say, "Hello, Gray," and I finally got through to her, she would pick up, she wouldn't say, "Hello, Gray," she'd go, "What do you want?" she'd go, "What do you want?" True story. True story. But Kathy has served hard, she has been dedicated. But Kathy has served hard, she has been dedicated. All her years of living over in the North Garner area, that's been a project for her, All her years of living over in the North Garner area, that's been a project for her, a process for her over the many years, and she has served us well, and she'll continue a process for her over the many years, and she has served us well, and she'll continue to serve us, and all I know, with the public arts and working in the Downtown Association, to serve us, and all I know, with the public arts and working in the Downtown Association, I know that she'll still be active, and it's been a pleasure and an honor serving with I know that she'll still be active, and it's been a pleasure and an honor serving with you. you.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I'd say we need to talk to Kathy, you realize she loves a few things: her Yeah, I'd say we need to talk to Kathy, you realize she loves a few things: her family, art, this broader Garner community, and the whole of humanity. family, art, this broader Garner community, and the whole of humanity. We sat next to each other during Veterans Day and just talked about history in the We sat next to each other during Veterans Day and just talked about history in the West, and her love of just people, and all people, is very obvious and evident all the West, and her love of just people, and all people, is very obvious and evident all the time. time. She is a role model for service and embodies what it means to serve in Garner, where you She is a role model for service and embodies what it means to serve in Garner, where you serve to give more than you receive. serve to give more than you receive. And I'd say I'll miss you, but like Gray said, you're probably not going too far. And I'd say I'll miss you, but like Gray said, you're probably not going too far. So it's been a pleasure, and like I say, we will see you around, I'm sure. So it's been a pleasure, and like I say, we will see you around, I'm sure.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Vance? Mr. Vance?
Kathy, I echo what has already been said, and you're not going nowhere. Kathy, I echo what has already been said, and you're not going nowhere. Really, you're already engaged in projects now with the town that you will continue to Really, you're already engaged in projects now with the town that you will continue to engage with once you leave the council. engage with once you leave the council. And I would say thank you for always being there, for those early morning phone calls And I would say thank you for always being there, for those early morning phone calls and talks and everything, and in your soft-spoken way, you've helped me out tremendously, transitioned. and talks and everything, and in your soft-spoken way, you've helped me out tremendously, transitioned. And I would like to say thank you for even believing in me to vote for me to be on the And I would like to say thank you for even believing in me to vote for me to be on the council when the seat was vacated by an untimely death, and appreciate everything that you've council when the seat was vacated by an untimely death, and appreciate everything that you've done, and I look forward to seeing you in the future and working with you in the future done, and I look forward to seeing you in the future and working with you in the future as well. as well.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment to Mr. Vance? Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment to Mr. Vance? I nagged Mr. Vance for over 10 years to run for the council. I nagged Mr. Vance for over 10 years to run for the council. Did I do a good job? Did I do a good job?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Just another little mark on your checklist there of having done a good job. Just another little mark on your checklist there of having done a good job. No, I've known Kathy for over 40 years and had the pleasure of working with her the last No, I've known Kathy for over 40 years and had the pleasure of working with her the last two, but working around her for 2025 before that. two, but working around her for 2025 before that. She was all about downtown Garner before there was a downtown Garner. She was all about downtown Garner before there was a downtown Garner. Been an inspiration to work with. Been an inspiration to work with. And like I say, the only reason we're letting you off is because we know you'll still be And like I say, the only reason we're letting you off is because we know you'll still be around and do almost all of the same thing, just a lot less stress. around and do almost all of the same things, just a lot less stress. And a little more freedom with your family and stuff, so we're delighted. And a little more freedom with your family and stuff, so we're delighted. And we're going to have a short photo opportunity here. And we're going to have a short photo opportunity here. I've told by our Public Information Officer that it's not real until you take a picture. I've told by our Public Information Officer that it's not real until you take a picture. So I'm going to ask all of our council members to join us down here for the actual photographic So I'm going to ask all of our council members to join us down here for the actual photographic evidence that we're doing this. evidence that we're doing this. It may show up in the next newspaper 20 years from now. It may show up in the next newspaper 20 years from now. We'll join that upstairs. We'll join that upstairs. We'll join that upstairs. Let's move right along to item D of the organizational meeting. And this comes to another joyous occasion here too, where we swear in our two newly elected council members. One is brand new to the Town of Garner Board. One is the, the senior member of the Garner Board. It's great to be here. It's just the right balance of wise perspective of history and youthful enthusiasm. I think we got the best of both worlds here.
But I repeat, I'm not the oldest town council member.
Hey, hey, don't be looking at me. Don't be looking at me.
Don't be looking at me.
You're the most experienced council member. Don't forget that. No, we appreciate your historical perspective, but this is a very important part of what we do. In a democracy, it's an orderly change of power as we go through the processes. And the process is good, so the results are good. That's, that's the bottom line. So we're very glad you could join us here today. And particularly to have a two-for-one special, our special guest here, Representative Abraham Jones of the North Carolina House of Representatives District 38. I think he's done this a time or two in the past, but he's still willing to give us a two-for-one special like a bogey, buy one, get one, two swearing ins at once. And we'll start, if we could, please, with swearing in Kelvin Stalins as our newest member. Yes, we need someone to hold the Bible. We need someone to organize them. And there's a good woman, there's a good woman present to help us with that. Yes, sir, that'd be perfect. That'd be perfect. Yeah, whatever, whatever Mr. Mercer says as our public information officer, whatever he says will be right.
I state your name. You solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of the state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member so help me God. You say, as you said, as you said. Congratulations.
Kathy, I think we should check the spelling on here. Your first official act is to sign your own document there.
He'll sign after you.
Oh. And before I go on to the next one, I just want to say a couple things. I'll be sure.
Yes, sir.
Very brief. I've known Mr. Stalins quite a while. He was my first legislative assistant for the Republican Party. He's given a very distinct, solid, dedicated young man, served his path. I am very, very proud of him. Thank you.
Representative Jones, while you're here, if we could get you to do one more swearing in. And I believe you know Mr. Singleton, if you were joined, he and his family down there. And I hope you can find some nice things to say about him as well.
I would state your name.
John Brambleton.
You solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member so help me God. You say, as you said, as you said. Congratulations.
Take, take your time. You don't mind if he has a seat again. He, it's okay if he has a seat.
Yes, he can have a seat. I've known and missed Mr. Singleton for a long time. A very close friend. He lived in Garner. Passed away. He was a very good example. So I'm sure he was a great man on the road. He was a very, 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 very.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Jones, let me shake your hand. We greatly appreciate you coming out here and helping us. And I'll take my hand back. Thank you, thank you. We'll count on you to do this again. Thank you.
That's beautiful.
Thank you. Now, even though our council members have had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Singleton previously, many times through the years, I still would like to give them one more shot. Any comments or suggestions you might have for Mr. Singleton? Mr. Vance, let's start with you this time.
Well, I would just say that congratulations to you both. I look forward to continue to work with, with you, Mr. Singleton, and your wealth of experience and knowledge is remembering things that happened in the town is a tremendous asset and look forward to working with you continuously on the various different opportunities we have. But we, we may not agree on all things, but that's okay. That's part of the process and I appreciate the way you've handled yourself with me and worked with me over the years. I look forward to working with you continuing. And to Mr. Stalins, congratulations to you. I look forward to learning more about you and working with you as well as we go through this, this growth with the town together and learning more together. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a harmonious type of relationship as we continue to do the best we can for the Town of Garner.
Thank you. Mr. Behringer.
Yes, congratulations to both of you. I think we've inherited some very hardworking residents who want to do good by the town. Excited to work with both of you and really look forward to what we as a, as a council and as a town are able to do with this team together. So welcome aboard and re-welcome aboard, I guess.
And Mr. Stalins, you have the opportunity to speak about yourself and our Mr. Singleton. It's your pleasure.
Most definitely so. I prepared some remarks. I want to start by saying it's kind of hard to find words to describe the honor and privilege I feel given these remarks right now. But I do want to say thank you, especially thank you to the citizens of Garner. Thank you to everyone who supported me, challenged me, encouraged me, believed in what this moment could mean for our town. And thank you to the people of Garner for trusting me with this opportunity to serve you for the next four years. And that trust is not something that I take lightly. During this past year, just going door to door, sitting in living rooms, talking to folks in small businesses, neighborhoods, one thing kept coming up, that people want to feel secure in their ability to stay rooted here. They want a town where growth doesn't push them out, where opportunity feels just as available as tomorrow as it felt a generation ago. That's not a novel idea. That's the community expectation for us sitting on this council. So today, as I'm sworn in, I'm thinking less about policy debates and more about partnership because the work ahead isn't about who wins an argument. It's about whether we can come together, even when we don't agree on every detail, to address the issues that matter the most to the people who live here. I was elected on a commitment to focus on affordability, accessibility and accountability. And those aren't just my slogans, they're responsibility of all of us on council. I can't fulfill them alone, no one on this council can, because real progress is built through collaboration with residents, with staff, with small businesses, with local organizations and with one another as a council. So when we talk about affordability, that means listening to families who are feeling the squeeze. That means stepping outside of the box and working with staff and community partners to find creative, innovative, but realistic solutions. When we talk about accessibility, that means making sure that people can reach their leaders, can understand how decisions are made and feel comfortable walking in the town hall. And when we talk about accountability, that means being transparent about everything that we're doing while we're doing it and how it affects everybody that we serve. So none of this is about politics, it's about taking care of people every single day. It's about trying every single day to make sure that we're making this town work a little bit better for the people who call it home. So I believe there's more common ground in this community than conflict, more shared hopes than agree, than disagreements, more opportunities to roll up our sleeves together and get things done. So my commitment today is simple. I want to show up with openness and respect and a willingness to work alongside anyone who wants to make Garner a stronger place to live. And I will listen first, I will promise to learn continuously and I will do everything I can to ensure that our decisions reflect the accurate lived experiences and realities of people who we serve. So Garner, thank you for giving me this honor. Thank you for giving me this chance and this opportunity to serve you. I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
And we'll skip you for just a moment. We'll come back to you. Let's hear from Mr. Matthews.
Congratulations to both of you. And I had the opportunity to haze Kelvin a little bit this afternoon. I've seen him wandering around like he was lost and I said, what are you looking for? He said, the IT department. I go get my laptop. I said, okay, you gotta go out of the building, you gotta go outside a library to the police department, they'll escort you to the back. So I go upstairs and the director of IT is sitting up there waiting for him. And I said, this ain't looking good. So steered him in the right direction, but he got a chance to tour the police station. I thanked him in a good way. I'm quite sure what he meant by that, but being the new guy, but he was a good sport about it and look forward to working with you. And I like your remarks. We do rep, we work for 45,000 people and probably 5,000 more in a few years. And hopefully, we can work together and do good things for all the people of Garner. And so, and, and Gray, he is our senior member here, I guess, and he's the longest, right? Did I do that right? Maybe not the oldest, but okay. But Gray and I love Friday night sock hop. That don't mean nothing to a lot of y'all here, but it does to he and I. Old DJ that comes on on Friday nights at 6 o'clock and plays, plays a number of oldies, stuff that maybe I and, and Gray and the mayor would understand, but, but, and plus Gray keeps me chocolate covered peanuts and, and I've enjoyed working with him. I think we'll have a good four years coming on. Thank you so much and congratulations again.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Singleton.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand here for a second. I want to recognize my family, but you can't do this job without your family's support. And I first got elected, I was 31 and Tracy and I, my wife Tracy, we didn't have any kids. Now, tonight, our oldest daughter Rachel was here and our son in Mall Connor. Our son Harrison is here and our youngest daughter Emma is down at UNCW. She graduates in a couple of weeks, so she could not be here tonight. So you can't do this job without your family. You have to have their support and their time and that's all they've known is me serving on the town council. So I think it's positive that when you show service and give service, that hopefully that's, that'll be a reflection of your kids, whether it's today or in the future. I want to thank all the many people out here who helped with the campaign. There are countless people out here I can look at up on each row who helped. I mean, different people from all different backgrounds, ages, it doesn't matter. So many people spent countless hours working and helping, spent countless hours working at the polls. I can tell you that working at the polls, especially early voting with Mr. Stalins was enjoyable. He, I don't want to get into any policy decisions and discussions with him because he will bury me in the ground because he's much better informed on policy issues than I am. And I'm talking more at the state and federal level. But he's energetic and he's smart and he will, he will do a good job serving the town. You know, we're here as government, we, we have to be as open as need to be and we'll be as open as we can. We can't decide issues, you know, in, in a meeting that everyone is not allowed to be at, period. And this is why we don't trust government. Now, whether it's, I think it's more at the federal and state level, but you have to be open and we're gonna be open here. We can't make decisions, everything can't be settled up on the second floor at town hall. They have to be open. And I asked our attorney, she sent us an email, that we sometimes meet with developers, you can meet two at the time, you know, the quorum, talk about projects and they come forward and give some ideas. I said, that's great, we've been doing it for two or three years. I said, but we're gonna do it now and it's gonna be part of the record. People can see when the project is forged, that Mr. Singleton, Mr. Matthews met with this person on this date for two hours or whatever. So everyone knows because everything else is public, that should be public too. Glad we're gonna be forward with that. I think it's interesting that some people didn't, I want to have you elected because they thought we were gonna shut down anything in Garner. No more businesses, no more housing developments, no nothing. It's ironic because of my length of service, I've approved more residents in New York than anybody. It's not even close and more square foot is a business and commercial property than anybody else. It's not even close. You know, here the last couple of years, two or three years, we've had some, you know, split votes, but you know what? That's the way it works. But we can always aim and try to be better and aim higher. We have to. We have to quit doing the same old, same old. We were at a great break of Wake Med and one of the mayors of our sister towns, the rest of us, that they had no more land in their town. And they're not in any land. So we have to be selective when people come here, when, when residential projects and commercial projects want to come here and a mix, a more mixed use. And we have to be selective. We just can't check mark, oh yeah, wink, wink, no, no, we're gonna do this. This is not, we're not running a country club, we're running the town. The 44,000, 45,000 people, ran four years ago, we were at 32,000 people or something like that. That's how much has changed. I can tell you, talking to people in the polls, this is not the Garner that people once knew, not the Garner I grew up in. And people are just left field and clueless, if you know my opinion about, many of the older residents here just do not understand the change that is taking place. Change where I grew up, my parents have both passed away in the last year, last 13 months. In our neighborhood, my father, who moved there, was the last person living of all the people I grew up with. Was the last one. We had a neighbor up the street who passed away in 2024 and all of them are gone. And so that's the total transformation of our neighborhood that started out in the 60s. And that's not the only neighborhood where that's happened in. Something that you learn, when I was working at the polls in 2021, I was in South Garner and I had seven or eight people, different, not together, come up to me and say, we love that we're down here in the New Bethel, Hebron Churk Road area, but we love our neighborhood, there's no place to do anything. Every house, there's no green space, there's no nothing for us to do anything. Our kids had no place to go. And there's a townhome project behind my office that they were planning an empty lot that's not known by them. And I talked to a couple of parents, they told me the same thing. So I took a video, I thought our planning director, Mr. Trezenberg, and I said, hey, can we do something different here? And I brought it to the council and it took a while to get council support, but now residential projects have flat usable green space, not the bank of a creek where you can't do anything. This is not, I always say it's for kids, but it's for adults too. Go out to the White Deer or Lake Vincent Park or one of our parks and walk. Who's doing most of the walking? Who's rolling around in the meadows? It's adults. It's not just kids. Kids, you know, adults need to open space too. But who would have thought 15 years ago, we would be building dog parks? I mean, think about it. Build a park for a dog, really? But we don't have the space because there's so much multifamily, you know? And in some cases, my favorite term, we've rammed and crammed so much stuff in here, they don't have any place to go. So you have to have dog parks. Those things, things are important. Housing affordability, that's not a Garner problem, it's a Wake County problem, it's a NASTRA problem. And we have to address it. I want to thank the people who have served on the Affordable Housing Task Force. Thank Mr. Vance for his years leading that. I know Mr. Behringer served on that with him and there's others here in the audience who have. And we're finally, it looks like, I think I understand from yesterday, there's a staff position. Our staff has worked on a job classification for that position because we've got to do something. The other towns are doing it out. I understand they got some information from towns that surround us. Well, if they got that position, we should be on top of this too. And it's that and also helping to keep some of our seniors and older citizens and some of their older neighborhoods and their homes who need repairs that they can't afford. We don't need to be, it's unfortunate because our property values are so high and the cost of tax bills are so much nowadays, it's hard for some people to make repairs. And so we gotta help some way, in some fashion. We're not gonna raise taxes. Good Lord, if you looked at the last two budgets, I voted against them. I'm not, I voted my show of tax increases, but I voted against them also. And so we have got to be, we have got to be mindful of all that is taking place. We've got several projects in town we need. Our public works facility is 45 years old, they have to have a new facility. We've got a fire station too, which is, I think, 50 years old. We've got to build a new station too in conjunction with Wake County. These things cost money. I'm not talking about $2, $3 million, folks. We're talking a lot of money. I share, that fire station five was, we, eight and a half and nine million dollars. And that was a joint venture with Wake County. So that tells you how much. and that was a joint venture with Wake County, so that tells you how much these projects cost. So it's important that we be mindful of the effect of what it costs to live here, what it costs to do these projects, we have to be mindful of that as we proceed through the budget process. And one last thing I'll say is, we've had an event for 10 months talking about rebranding and refreshing this logo and that logo, and I'll say this, we've got a majority to change here on the council, I don't know what kind of logo we're gonna come up with, but I'll tell you one thing, I don't know how many colors are gonna be in it, but blue and gold will be in the new logo. Don't knock back part of your history, it was so important to bring the two high schools together, you don't remove history from our future, the thought of removing our history from our future was and remains disgraceful, that was a bad decision. And I don't know what's gonna happen in that process, but we're gonna address it in a different way, we've got plenty of information, we've got a survey, and just, survey wasn't followed, but anyway, we're gonna address the situation. Again, I want to thank everyone for their support, again, all the volunteers here, who spent countless hours working hard to help me get elected, again, I want to thank my family, this is the first time I've run, my parents were both not here, my mom had dementia for many years, and probably doesn't remember 2021 at all anyway, but my father voted, he voted the 23 election here, because I drove him up to vote, but they're both not here any longer, so, again, I thank my wife Tracy, Rach McConner, and Harrison, and my daughter Anna, who's probably on Facebook being mad because I mentioned her name twice. Thank y'all again, I look forward to another four years serving you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Singleton, I don't get to vote, but I do get to speak every once in a while, and I just want to say thanks very much to both of our newly elected council members here, and you can see what makes this a great council, we have historical perspective, we have the new fresh ideas coming in, and I just got to really, really reach out to Mr. Stallings here, you really got my attention when you focused on partnership, we can't do it by ourselves, we got all kinds of partners, from citizens to other governmental entities we work with, you know this, listening, you talk about listening, that's the way we learn, isn't it? I've found out through the years that I learn a lot more by listening than I do by speaking, and I appreciate the input that you've got, and the transparency that you mentioned. What really got me, Mr. Stallings, when you said, you can see that we have more in common than we have more to argue about, we need to focus on the things that bring us together, there's always gonna be differences of opinions, we'll always work through them, that's what the nature of democracy is, but at the end of the day, we're all working for a common good. So I'm excited about the years coming up, I'm excited where we are, we're so glad to have your enthusiasm here, let's have one more big round of applause for all of our council members. Now, if we get back to the agenda, I told you this was not a regular meeting, this is not a regular meeting, we have a lot of very special things going on here tonight, it is an organizational meeting, and part of the organizational meeting, item two, concerns, it says pursuant to Rule Eight of the Garner Town Council Rules of Procedure and NCGS 16A-70, council will elect a mayor pro temp, and this is something I've learned a lot about in the last two years, and the value of this position, and the importance of this position. In fact, the mayor pro temp, in a way, is a better job than the mayor, because the mayor never gets to vote, but the mayor pro temp, they get to run a meeting once in a while and vote, and they get to go to lots of great events, that's one of the best things that has been about this. And the way that we've selected this, I'm very proud of the process that we've been through internally, and will complete here this evening, is communication, I think we heard that, it's dialogue, I've talked individually with each of the council members, they've talked among themselves, there's no backdoor deals, there's no secret alliances, it's just common sense as we put our heads together to figure out what's the best step forward on this. And with that being said, I'm gonna call on Mr. Vance, our current mayor pro temp, to talk a little bit about what's involved in it, and maybe even make a motion.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor Gupta, to the members of the town council and the town staff and citizens of Garner, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude for the opportunity to serve as mayor pro temp for three years, it has been an honor to work alongside dedicated leaders and public servants who care deeply about the future of our community. To Mayor Gupta, thank you for your steadfast leadership, guidance, and support, your commitment to the well-being and progress of Garner sets an example for all of us to serve. To my fellow council members, I'm grateful for the confidence, the collaboration, your thoughtful decision-making, and your shared passion for improving the lives of our residents, serving with each of you has strengthened my appreciation for teamwork and public service. To the town staff, thank you for your professionalism, dedication, and tireless work behind the scenes, your commitment to excellence ensures that our town runs smoothly, that our residents receive the highest level of service, Garner is stronger because of your efforts. To the citizens of Garner, thank you for your trust, engagement, encouragement, every decision we make is shaped by your voices, your needs, and your hopes for this town. It is a privilege to represent you as such a vibrant, caring, and forward-thinking community, serving as mayor pro temp has both been humbling and inspiring, and I remain committed to working with all of you to support the continued growth, unity, and success of the town of Garner. It has been, it has been a privilege, and on that, Mayor Gupta, I would like to make a motion, I would like to move that mayor, that councilman Damian Dellinger be selected as mayor pro temp.
Second.
There's a motion at a second for Mr. Dellinger to be elected to mayor pro temp, we can entertain any discussion or any conversation, there's another comment or two I'll make at the end of this, is there any more discussion before we call a vote? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a voice vote to elect Damian Dellinger, our new mayor pro temp, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, you're elected mayor pro temp. I would, again, just like to emphasize how important it is, how much fun it can be, how much work it can be, but I've known Damian for probably 30 or 40 years, he's not afraid of hard work, that's good news, and always has good insight, always can handle the facts. Mr. Matthews, I think you wanted maybe to make a comment or two about the position.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dellinger, he and I hit the campaign trail a few, quite a few years ago, it's moved on now, so, but congratulations on this, and I see you've got some tough shoes to follow with our former mayor pro temp, and having said that, I got to know the former mayor pro temp, and he's a true friend, and what you see is what you get with Councilman Vance, and it's been a privilege to work with you and continue to work with you, and I look forward to working with you with the same spirit and same, because I know you're gonna work hard, and as we say about the mayor pro temp, you're gonna put in about as many hours as the mayor does, and he's up here just about every day, so, but we work for 45,000 people out there, and we've got to work together, and got to get it right first time, so congratulations and good luck.
And I didn't ask whether you accept the position, I'm assuming that you will.
I don't know that I have a choice, the attorney will have to let us.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make at this point?
Just briefly, I just want to thank my fellow council members for the opportunity, it's always been a pleasure to serve Garner, and I'll continue to do that, I think we're at a place where we really need to lean in to Garner's humble greatness, leverage our strengths, and not allow ourselves to be taken advantage of, as a community and as a town, as we grow, and really feel our position in the county and in the community, and step forward to be the Garner we want everybody to know we are. A lot of what we'll do over the next few years will be mitigating some of the growth that has been approved in the past, so that's part of our task, but the other part of our task will be forging the Garner of the future, Garner 2030 and beyond, what do we want that to look like? This town has changed so much in the past few years, and that's just going to accelerate. We are probably the most diverse community in Wake County right now, and that is a wonderful and beautiful thing, and the fact that everyone can feel welcome and safe here is a beautiful thing, and we will continue to fight for that and preserve that. We need to not just aim high, sometimes we need to choose the right target and take those opportunities, and I think that's the next step in the evolution of the town, we need to be data-driven, data-informed, but people committed. It all comes down to the residents, I tell people, I say, oh, you're a politician, I'm not a politician, I'm an elected official, I'm just a resident that was elected by you to sit up here and govern and report back. Our loyalty and our commitment is to the residents of Garner, because that's what we are, we're just residents like you, and I think that is one of the most humbling things about being on this council, is the spirit of service that Kathy had has not left, it has accelerated and grown, and it's still here, it's one of the greatest things about service, everybody up here loves Garner, and you never question that at any moment. I'm just excited for the next two years at least, we'll see what happens after that, but thank you, everyone, and look forward to working with everybody, and let's go Garner.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dellinger, you know you have a great team behind you, on the council, the staff, your citizens, everybody, we're here, we have a lot in common, we have a lot in common, we want to make Garner a great place to be. And getting back to our regular agenda here, we're down to section E, which has to do with petitions and comments, and I will ask the town clerk if anyone has signed up to speak in this session.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, we've had enough talking, we'll listen to you next time, we listen to you every day, seriously, I can't emphasize enough how much we do try to listen, your council members are great ears to listen to you, email us, call us, stop us in a grocery store, talk to us anytime. Somebody asked me today at the gym, they said, do you get bothered a lot by people asking these things a lot? I said, I haven't been bothered yet, everyone has been a welcome conversation, and I know everybody up here reflects the same feeling, we love your input, we're here to work for you, when somebody comes up and speaks to me, I say, yes, sir, boss, I'm here to serve, just tell me what I can do, you are my boss, you pay our salaries, we're here to help you. So saying that, we'll move right along, no petitions and comments, we'll go to adoption of agenda, we have a few little items to cover, the council members have had a chance to look over the agenda, is there a motion to approve the rest of this agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Stallings, I'm gonna skip the conversation and go straight to a voice vote, all those in favor of adopting this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, that passes, we'll move right along to new and old business, item G, and we'll go to our next presenter, Terry Jones, our town attorney, to talk about council rules of procedure, and perhaps also about code of conduct and ethics. While you're up there, why not tell us all about it? Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I seem to pick like, these really exciting nights to present some pretty dry information to you, but it is necessary, at the organizational meeting, that's the traditional time that council would adopt, or revisit, or make any modifications to its rules of procedure, the meeting rules of procedure help to make the meetings efficient and effective, but also transparent and to the public, so, bear with me, as in your packet, this particular version of the meeting rules were adopted in 2022 by resolution after a lot of work, they are based on the model rules suggested by the University of North Carolina School of Government, they are a modification of Robert's Rules of Order, but this is the time, if council would like to discuss any changes, I have a couple that I would be recommending to council that are essentially some cleanup items to do with the closed sessions that are in rule number five, just a more closely mirror state law, and then some other cleanup items about the council committees that you'll vote on later in the agenda, but this is really a time for discussion, if any council members, if there's any issues that you'd like to discuss, my suggestion would be to raise those issues, see if there's consensus of council, and then I would incorporate those changes, then bring them back for a formal vote and approval at a subsequent meeting.
She's called for comments or input at this point, hearing none, we'll roll on to the next topic.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that, I would actually let everyone get a chance to acquaint themselves and get feedback to you for a later vote.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jones.
That's fairly easy. All right, then moving on, bear with me to our code of conduct and ethics. All right, so since I believe 2010, that was, or 2009, the general assembly at that time required that every local government governing board, be that a municipality or Board of County Commissioners, adopt a code of ethics, so that was done in 2010, and then in 2024, council decided that we would revisit that and adopt a code of conduct and ethics. Again, the organizational meeting is a time for council to determine what the expectations are among council members, how council members will act with town staff, with the public, in public meetings and in private settings, so, again, this is a time to discuss whether there are any changes that council members would like to make to this, and again, my recommendation would be to provide those changes, and then have an opportunity for council to consider those, and bring that back for a vote and adoption at a subsequent meeting.
Bummit.
Yeah, I have some feedback, and I think it'd probably be better to sit down, I think there are some sections I want to address, but just with regards to the First Amendment conflicts that I sort of see in some of the code of ethics, I'll send you a memo on the sections I think that need to be addressed with regards to First Amendment.
Yes, I would just comment also, these are guidelines, these are procedures, we do want to make them as accurate as possible, just because we approved them a year and a half ago doesn't mean they're current today, we want to keep up with current standards, and your suggestion is great, Mr. Dellinger, put it in writing, sit down, talk about it, let's have discussions, and make sure we're doing the best possible thing to continue our good work together, our good communication, and be transparent at the same time, and not to mention comply with all the laws, we do that.
So, and again, I'll just remind you that the five items that are required under state law are, and it's sad that you have to be reminded of this, but the need to obey all applicable laws, the need to uphold the integrity and independence of the elected officials, the need to avoid impropriety in the exercise of your official duties, the need to faithfully perform the duties of your elected office, as well as the need to conduct the affairs of town council in an open and public manner, including complying with all applicable laws governing open meetings and public records, so happy to assist you with making any changes that council feels is necessary or appropriate.
Thank you, and just to reemphasize, it's not just once a year, or once every two years we get to do this, anytime we see a chance to improve our process, our procedures, our code of conduct, we want to bring it to Ms. Jones' attention, talk about it, figure out the best way to communicate to keep us on the right track, it's an ongoing process. Any other questions, comments for Ms. Jones? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us along to item three there, and it has to do with appointing members to three standing committees of council, and this is one where we also have done some homework and got input from all of the council members involved in this, the three standing committees that are elected by council each year are human resources, law and finance, and public works. The most glamorous one has been human resources, I think by a long shot. Uh, the most glamorous one has been Human Resources, I think by a long shot. This, these are the folks who, uh, solicit participants in our advisory boards and, and different liaison situations, and they take this very seriously. Uh, this is the, the slate that I have put together to provide to all of you. You've all looked at it. Human Resources, it's my recommendation that, that Elmo Vance and Damian Dellinger continue in their role there. Uh, Law and Finance, that, that would be, uh, staffed by Phil Matthews and Kelvin Stallins. Our Public Works Committee would be, uh, Elmo Vance and Grace Singleton. Uh, that's the slate that I presented to council, and we'll entertain a discussion and, uh, entertain a motion and/or, uh, adjustment to that. Uh, any, any, any comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stallins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matthews to adopt the, the, uh, the list of candidates that we have here to, uh, uh, put these folks in charge of these three committees. If there's no further discussion, we'll, uh, put that to a voice vote. Uh, all in favor of adopting this slate of council committee members, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it's adopted. Thank you. And that brings us to item H, which is updates to council. This is where I get off the hook a little bit and let y'all talk a little bit. Uh, we'll start with committee reports. Uh, there's several council members that are on various committees. Uh, let's start with Mr. Matthews this time. Any reports from your committee work?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Veterans Advisory Committee will be meeting this coming Monday at nine o'clock at White Deer Park, and it is open to the public. So if you want to come in and hang out, see about the veterans we've got coming, coming up. And we've got a great group of worker bees, as I like to call it, and we've got a lot of good things coming. So that'll be this Monday at, uh, nine o'clock at White Deer Park.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, committee reports.
Yes, sir.
You haven't been on a committee yet. You couldn't have a report, could you? But you can speak up if you'd like to.
I hope to have a lot of them in the future.
Me too. I'm, I'm pretty sure. You're on a lot of good committees. You're gonna have some fun. Mr. Dellinger?
No reports.
Mr. Vance?
Uh, yes, like to say that the Affordable Housing Task Force met on Monday, and I would like to say thank you for all those who are part of that committee, from the staff and to the task force members. A lot of hard work went into, uh, the recommendation that's going to be brought before to the council on December 16th. And, uh, that is the report. The, the task force will provide recommendations to the council for consideration and approval at the December 16th meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And that brings us to item two, manager reports. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. No formal reports this evening.
Wow. And we heard some from our attorney. Let's go see if there's any other attorney reports.
No reports tonight. I am seeking a closed session to discuss litigation.
Okay, well, we'll run back through council members, starting with Mr. Vance. Is there any council report, uh, that wasn't covered in the committee reports?
No council report.
Mr. Dellinger?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Stallins?
Just excited to be here and ready to get to work.
All right. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
None.
Okay. Uh, that being said, I think our next order of business, looking at the agenda, is a closed session that has to do with litigation. And Ms. Jones, if you could give us the proper directive on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 Point 11A3, a motion to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation or settlement of a claim.
Okay. Is there a motion to move toward a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of moving to a closed session to discuss the items just described, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, we will move to a closed session. We will return, but no need to stick around. You can watch this on TV as we come back.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I would say thank you for your service. We have been here 39 years. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We'll listen to that any day. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much.
We could request-
I'd like to call your police chief.
There you go. And not to mention the great police chief.
You've known him for a long time.
All right.
We could request a brief recess so that the group photo could be taken before the closed session?
There's another group photo? Oh, my goodness. Get in here, Mr. PIO. Come on, Public Information Officer, get in here.
It'll take a few minutes.
And it's showtime. We're back. We returned from the closed session to resume our regular session here. I will call on our town attorney to give us a briefing of what occurred in the closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council met with the town attorney and assistant town attorney to receive an update on pending litigation and claims against the town. No votes or official action were taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council met with the town attorney and assistant town attorney to receive an update on pending litigation and claims against the town. No votes were or official action were taken in closed session.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further business or things we need to discuss here, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
No move. Second?
The motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you and thank all the faithful listeners at home.